Hi, everybody. Everybody all happy? My name is Kimberly Goheen Elba and I have been banned from publicly speaking here. I believe it was illegally. And I'm gonna have the mayor tonight tell you, the people, you, the voters, why she would take somebody that publicly speaks and ban them from speaking. She has been working now for about four years to ban our open public comments. You can no longer, like at this meeting, you will not be able to say anything you want for three minutes. They have banned all that. And then they, I'll say, socialistically, put it into a community forum. That way it complies with the law, but not really. She does not want to listen to the people. And I'm here, gonna witness, and I'm gonna ask her to tell me why I will not be able to speak tonight on the agenda, since I've been doing it for almost five years. So we believe that it's because she's a Marxist form of government here. They proclaim to be a sanctuary city, which, you know, would be fine with me, except for it's using our hard-earned tax dollars to carry through with these special interests, okay?
I don't mind being kind and loving.
Yes, and I hope I'll be kind and loving myself. I think they put salt. I'm speaking now. I think they put salt on a healing wound of racism. They have brought racism up when we, the people of all of America, love people of color. What we don't want is illegal immigrants here using our hard-earned tax dollars.
Yeah, I don't care if there are illegal immigrants. You're a relative. They can't overcome it.
We come here legally now. There's laws. There's laws such as... I'm talking about my open public comments here about your city council meeting. They are doing it in your business. Do you live here, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay, I was born here, were you?
I was born in America.
Were you born in Vancouver?
I was born in America.
Okay, but do you have a love of where you were born, your city? Do you love your... Do you love the city that you live in? I love my city where I was born and it's Marxist socialist, alright.
I love my country.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm asking for our open public comments to come back to the people. So the city here are complaining. That way, ma'am, you can speak freely for three minutes. Or we don't have nobody here anymore. I'm talking about it maybe.
The mayor's a crook.
Okay?
The mayor needs to go to jail.
She deliberately took my First Amendment rights away. I'm gonna stand up for my rights, just as I would hope you would too. Okay? Thank you very much. And that's all the best. We can love each other. What's the difference here? We're neither...
Go ahead, start today, ma'am.
And tax money.
You guys are talking.
There you go. Good evening. Today is Monday, October 27th, 2025. This is the Vancouver City Council meeting. We will start the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Councilwoman Harless, present. Perez.
President.
Fox.
Here.
Paulson. Stobart.
Here.
Hanson.
Present.
Mayor McInerney, local.
Present, thank you.
Move to excuse Mayor Perkins.
Eric Paulson. Motion of the second dozen, they may say aye.
Aye.
Of course. Motion, Perez. Thank you very much. I have a couple proclamations this evening. Let's start off with our Joyo proclamations. Mr. Bomar and Bruce Higgins are with us. Elie Kasab is with us. And, yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Whereas the city of Vancouver, through its council, established the Joyo Sister City program in October 1995, creating a lasting friendship between the people of Vancouver and Joyo City, Japan. And for thirty years, this sister-city relationship has fostered mutual understanding and respect, building enduring ties of friendship and cooperation between our two communities. And the sister-city relationship between Vancouver and Joyo has enhanced our communities' economic, social, cultural, and educational vitality by promoting international interest, communication, and understanding. Whereas over the past three decades, our relationship has continued to grow stronger through countless cultural, social, and educational exchanges that enrich the lives of both communities. Now, therefore, I am McInerney, Mayor of Vancouver, Washington, due here by proclaiming the thirtieth anniversary of sister cities with Joyo, Japan, and encourage our community to join in celebrating this beautiful and vibrant partnership between Joyo and the city of Vancouver. I would also like to recognize the instrumental role of Mayor Bruce Higgins, who during his tenure as mayor from 1987 to 1995, founded the long-lasting sisterhood between our great cities. Fox, you wanna come on up? Mayor, are you going to come on this? Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the notice and I appreciate the celebration. I guess I'll just go back in history. When I was mayor, I was invited and attended an international mayor's conference in Tokyo. And as notice of my departure was publicized, Kagi Yama-san came up to me and said, "While you're in Japan, I'd love to have you visit Joyo." And so, having attended the International Mayor's Conference in Tokyo, I rented a car and drove up to Joyo to meet Kagi Yama. And that was the beginning of this long-term relationship. And what do they say? I give full credit to Mr. John Kagi Yama. He not only helped establish the sister-city relationship, he also sponsored students from our public schools to go over and spend a semester in Joyo. And he also helped us establish the International Committee and was just a very fine citizen. So while I'd like to celebrate the darkness or... Very much appreciate the opportunity to celebrate the long-term relationship, but I just want to extend particular accolades to Mr. John Kagi Yama.
Thank you, Bruce. Eli?
Mr. Higgins kind of roped me into chairing the International Affairs Commission back in 1994. And we set up the criteria for sister city. And we went, he and I and Keith Goplin, that was so, went and signed the agreement in November, no, in October 30th, 1995. I've been back and forth about eleven times to Joyo and we'll go on again next week. And it's been a great relationship. It's been good for both cities. Very good. Thank you.
I just would like to say I'm very grateful I serve with, currently is the sister-city chair. And this relationship has expanded not only with the city, but our Rotary Club of Vancouver. We have a sister-club relationship there. Clark College and Partnership of Kyoto Women's University, the Columbia Economic Development Council, as well as other businesses in the area. There's a lot of ties to Japan and Southwest Washington, as you know. I'm very excited that we are expanding our relationship between the Chambers of Commerce as well, too. So just a lot of gratitude for those who helped found this relationship. It truly is special. And I hope that the citizens will take some time to learn about both cities and the relationship and the history that we have together. So thank you for this opportunity and recognition.
I always thought it was interesting that Joyo also built a playground with our fort.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing.
They took the design and moved it right over to their side of the Pacific Ocean. Thank you so very much. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I just wanna say thank you all for your service.
Yes.
Thank you, Bruce. Reverend Michael Jones and Mark Frazier. Here we go. The National Association for the Advancement of Color People, the NAACP, was founded in 1909 and stands for the nation's oldest and largest civil rights organization, committed to ensuring the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights for all persons and to eliminating race-based discrimination. And whereas the Vancouver branch of the NAACP chartered in 1945, emerged during the pivotal era of growth, migration, and social change, when black shipyard workers, soldiers, and families saw opportunities and belonging in the Vancouver community. And for eighty years, the NAACP Vancouver branch has been a steadfast advocate for civil rights, equal opportunity, and social justice, advancing progress in education, housing, employment, criminal justice reform, and civic participation. For eighty years, the NAACP Vancouver branch has been a steadfast advocate for civil rights, equal opportunity, and social justice, advancing progress in a number of different areas. The NAACP Vancouver branch represents not only an organization, but a living legacy of ordinary people doing extraordinary work. Teachers, veterans, faith leaders, parents, and students who carry the vision of freedom forward from one generation to the next. The city of Vancouver recognizes the NAACP Vancouver branch as a trusted community partner, collaborating with local government, schools, businesses, and civic organizations to create a stronger, fairer, and more inclusive city for all community members. Whereas the NAACP Vancouver branch celebrates its eightieth anniversary, we honor the courage and commitment of those who came before. We look ahead with hope for those who will continue this vital work for generations to come. Now, therefore, I am McInerney, Mayor of the city of Vancouver, due here by proclaiming November 1st, 2025, as NAACP Vancouver Branch Day in the city of Vancouver, and encourage all community members to join in recognizing and celebrating the profound contributions of the NAACP Vancouver branch to the advancement of civil rights, community progress, and shared humanity in the city of Vancouver. Riffle.
All right, bye.
Yeah.
Okay, I will wind out. Good evening to Mayor Ann and the city council members. I'm truly honored and blessed to receive this inaugural proclamation in celebration of the NAACP's eightieth anniversary, recognizing the African-American and Aspera communities for upholding and doing the good fight for civil rights and justice. On behalf of the NAACP Vancouver branch, I want to extend our sincere gratitude to the city of Vancouver for recognizing our ongoing commitment to justice, equity, and community service. As a retired Baltimore County Sheriff, this honor holds special meaning for me, which I can go through my years of public service and my dedication to civil rights. I also want to acknowledge my beautiful wife, Deanna DeFrasier, our former president and a true pillar of the community, recognized throughout the state of her tireless work in community service and her fight for civil justice. Her leadership continues to inspire us all. Thank you for your continued support and partnership. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, friends, and neighbors. It is an honor to stand here on behalf of the NAACP Vancouver as we celebrate eighty years of service advocacy and impact in our community. Eight decades of fighting for justice, equality, and the protection of civil rights. Since its creation in 1909, the NAACP has withstood the test of time, fighting through before Jim and Jane Crowe, leading through and during the Civil Rights Movement, advocating for civil rights, voting rights, and still standing strong through racial epidemics, all in the pursuit of justice, human dignity, and equality for all. We do this work not as a relic of the past, but as a force still essential, unfortunately, today. Since its creation in the 1909, we have withstood the test of time, really looking at how do we solve problems of the error of mass incarceration, unjust three-strike laws, and devastated black and brown families. The NAACP has remained steadfast, not fighting for recognition or applause, but because if we don't, who will? Civil rights and social justice aren't popular causes, they are a calling. One, we continue to answer generation after generation. And yet, here we are, facing many of the same challenges of racial injustice and equality and the denial of human dignity our predecessors fought to overcome. Communities of color and justice-impacted individuals still navigate systems never built for their success. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Justice Thurgood Marshall, and Fannie Lou Hamer have gone on from labor to reward, yet we remain, in 2025, still fighting the battles they began. Their legacy reminds us that the work isn't finished and the dream now depends on us. We gather at a pivotal moment in history across our nation. Fundamental rights and human dignity are being challenged, and our society is at a crossroad. It is crucial for us to understand the difference between respect and dignity. Respect is earned and conditional, while dignity is inherent and is worth every individual carries. Regardless of their race, regardless of their sexuality, regardless of their gender, regardless of their ability, where they come from, or what they believe, protecting that dignity must guide our actions and policies. So tonight, as we accept this proclamation from the city of Vancouver, we are reminded that progress is never given, it is fought for. And together, as a community, we have to do it together. We're grateful for our city leaders and neighbors who stand with us in this ongoing work. And we look forward to celebrating this milestone this weekend with members of the council at our eightieth anniversary gala and awards dinner. For eighty-eight years, the NAACP Vancouver has stood for justice, freedom, and the inherent dignity of every person. And we will continue to stand for the next eighty and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, that concludes our proclamations. It brings us in to community communication on the agenda items. I have Bruce Barnes, please.
For the record, good evening. My name is Bruce Barnes. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I'm wondering on Agenda Item 1, what the warranty is on the slurry that we're putting on all the streets in Vancouver. I've noticed a lot of that stuff, as soon as it gets wet or damaged, it chips up and we're back chipsealing it within two and a half, maybe three years at most. So that was my question for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the... Excuse me, I did the minute. I wanna, I'd like to speak, please. I have a right to have my First Amendment rights. I'm gonna speak on item 1. You are on suspension until March 31st, 2026, for using city services for campaign purposes. And where was this at, ma'am? Would you put it on record, please? Yes, in the letter that was sent to you. Could you please read that letter to the open public? Put it on record. Because what I think you're doing is violating my First Amendment rights, and I'd like it on record. I'd like to hear in words what that is. Thank you. I'll wait. Ms. Elbon, your conduct is disrupting the progress of this meeting. If I need to give you a second or three, I'll ask that you be removed from council chambers. So you refuse to put on record why you gave me a suspension of 180 days? At a public, open forum? Ms. Elbon, I just gave you the answer. No, you gave me no answer, ma'am. It was garbage. I don't understand it. Ms. Elbon, you are done. May I move to council chambers? Thank you very much for putting it on record. Read the title of item number four into the record. This is in ordinance authorizing 2026 rate adjustments for the city of Vancouver. Recycling and organic collection contract. It's in ordinance relating to rates setting for collection of solid waste recyclable materials and organics that are meant in certain sections of EFC 6.12. To increase or adjust 2026 rates and charges consistent with approved utility user tax rates in accordance with current contracts, providing for setting severability and then effective date. Counselors. Officers, I wonder if we can... Item number one, thank you. Any other items you'd like? Items one and two. I'll take a motion for items three, four, and five. Hanson, seconded by Fox. I'll listen, they may say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And the motion passes. Item number one, councilor, so we're going ahead.
Thank you, Miss Staff, again.
Our Director of Public Works is here. I don't know, Steve, do you have the... Are you available? Steve Wall.
Steve, I know you're new. Totally halfway, but you're on the spot here. Actually, I had a question on the warranty and on our street work. And can you answer off the top of your head?
Unfortunately, I can't. Steve Wall, Department of District Director, for reference. Yeah, I was trying to get a little bit of help in the meantime. Wasn't able to get the answer. So we will certainly look into that and forward a response to council.
Yeah, I think Bruce Barnes is probably signed up. If we could forward that out to Mr. Barnes as well. Thank you very much. With that, I move approval of item number one.
Thank you. Seconded by Bruce, those who may say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Counselor Fox, item number two.
I just wanted to elevate this emergency builder system. I was a police department system. I was new on council at the time, and this was some of the, you know, initial work we were doing with kind of making some changes to our police department operations. It felt like a really big decision at the time, moving away from the Portland system. So I just was wondering, Chief, we really haven't heard an update on this system, other than the staff report that notes that, you know, disruption in this contract would not be a good idea. But I'm just wondering, you know, just a quick overview of how do you think this particular program has been working? And do you imagine that it is a program that we want to continue using for years to come?
Yes, thanks, counsel. I, this is our report running software. And it does so much more than that, because it's actually our vehicle for reporting out our crime statistics to the FBI. When all of the agencies in the area were on one system that was run by Portland, things were great, but that system proved to be difficult over time. And we didn't own it, but Portland did. And so we moved away from it to this platform. It has worked for us primarily. It's been a good product for us. It hasn't been perfect, like no software. And we're always looking to see if there's something that suits our needs better. But for the time being, we have to have this. There's, you know, there's not an easy process to switch over from one platform to another. And so we want to continue to use this. What we are doing is we're staying on a kind of a one-year, we're doing it one year at a time. There are no discounts for going into a multi-year contract with this vendor. And so we always want to keep the door open for if there's something that suits the city's needs better. Want to be open to that. But for now, this is the software that we are using to capture all of our data.
I know one of our wish list items as we advance technology in our department was to utilize the AI writing capabilities for the report writing. Does this software allow for that expansion in the future?
Yeah.
In its current form, no. And we don't have anything from the vendor right now indicating that's something that will be available to us on the short horizon. But everybody is pushing towards AI. So I wouldn't be surprised if they eventually did include it themselves.
I wish the answer was yes there. That's such a big lift if we move to a different software platform.
Yeah, it's, that's always... No one wants to be charged that, because that's a very long, arduous process. But we would love to stay with it, just because we're used to it. But if there's something that integrates better with all of our other technology, we can certainly be open to it.
And we have the ability to make that.
Yes, that's why we're staying on a year, year with that.
All right, thank you. I'll look to provide item number two. There's questions.
Motion, Fox, seconded by Bruce, Chris, Congress, uh, okay, question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to relay experience, an experience I had interacting with AI police report repilot, police report writing software. And it was not a good experience. Different than their, not one that's doing our police records. They ran a demonstration of their software. And I volunteered to participate in an exercise. And what I found is, not just me, everybody who's there, found that the report-writing software inserted a lot of words of judgment into the narrative that was being written. So until there's some big advancements, it's not something that I would be comfortable seeing us move towards. Just because I don't want to see AI inserting bias into the reports that are being written. So...
When did you do this?
Uh, May.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So was it just verbatim?
It was not verbatim. It made judgments about the words that I used. It was more than just made a statement that... It said, made a nonsensical statement. And there were other examples in this report. So it's definitely holds lots of potentials for the future that I think is still not always to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Item number two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. That concludes the consent agenda. Ranges to communications from the council. Counselor Barnes. Counselor Perez. Counselor Fox.
Just want to share that, you know, once again, it's time to vote. Everyone should have got their ballots. And I just love my family tradition of sitting down with my son and my partner and a neighbor that has trouble visually. So we read the voter's guide to him, and it's just a really nice, fun activity. And I hope that folks have fun with voting above all, and not to make it too serious that you're not on the ballot, but just to say, I hope everyone votes. And so there's your ballot. It's something that's hard for you in this country, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor's over.
We have a motion that passes today, but a happy, pretty Halloween. And the event is going to close to our Mexican brothers and sisters.
Thank you. Counselors. Okay, no additional news. City manager, Workforce Southwest Washington, presentation.
Yes, we have a presentation from our Workforce Southwest Washington, Marty Farnes and Darcy Hoffman. Good evening. Good to see you. Hi, good evening. Well, thanks for having us this evening. I'm Marty Farnes. I'm Director of Programs with Workforce Southwest Washington. This is my colleague, Darcy Hoffman. She's Director of Business Services with Workforce Southwest Washington. And, um, do we have... Oh, sorry, I was supposed to do this. Yeah, it's okay. There we go. Okay. So W S W is short for, of course, Workforce Southwest Washington. You'll hear people refer to us as W S W. We are the workforce board for Clark, Calhoun, and Lakayakum Counties here in southwest Washington. We are designated through WEOWA legislation to oversee the workforce centers, and we also have youth programming. We fund training programs and we help get people into training so that they can secure quality employment at the outset of their training. We can also help folks get supportive services to get them through training. We don't actually do that work. We fund the work through the workforce centers and through our next programming.
Okay, so now I want to talk through your comprehensive economic development strategy and just kind of showcase some of the alignment that it has with the work that W S W is doing and our strategic plan. So we were a partner as you developed your five-year comprehensive economic development strategy. And I'm hoping that you see in today's presentation that we have a ton of intentional alignment. This has been super helpful to us as an organization and as staff. And I hope that the city will find it helpful too because it's got us in a place where it feels like we have, you know, very similar shared goals and we can kind of march in the same direction towards workforce and economic development. In the interest of time, you know, we had to have this slide deck done a couple of weeks ago. And since we actually ran through it, I got way too much content in here. I'm going to skim just a couple of things on this slide. My intention here was just to call out a couple of things that you all discovered through your analysis, and I just wanted to affirm these things. But I'm just going to stick with just one of them. And that's the second bullet point that you see on your screen, which is better access to quality jobs is residents' most important economic outcome. W S W launched a quality jobs strategy and framework in twenty twenty one. And so it's incredibly important to us that our community has access to jobs where they can support themselves with wages, where they can support themselves and their families, where they have safe working conditions, predictable schedules, predictable hours, comprehensive benefits, opportunities to advance in their careers. And all of that to say that we do have a framework in place. And so for businesses in Vancouver who are interested in trying some different things to make jobs better for workers, we do have some help and support that we can provide in that area. But the one thing I do want to spend a little bit of time on on this slide, and where I want to spend more time is actually getting, when we get into your goals, the first one, establish pathways to accessible quality jobs and reduce barriers to economic opportunities. Your first action, action A, is to promote and advance career opportunities in the trades. This, to me, is a really clear place for the city to engage with some of the work that we at W S W are already doing. So in two thousand and seven, the workforce boards that serve southwest Washington, that's us, we serve Clark, Calhoun, and Lakayakum Counties, the workforce board that serves the Portland metro region and the workforce board in Clackamas, we established the Columbia Willamette Workforce Collaborative, or C W W C, because that's a mouthful. So we've been working together since then to enhance the region's workforce, foster business growth and economic development, and to strategically manage public workforce investments. So we're serving as conveners, investors, researchers. And we're doing all of this with our partners in business, higher education, our community-based organizations, labor, government, you name it. And really, our whole goal is that we want to make sure that we're getting workers, we're preparing workers for good jobs in the region, quality jobs in the region, and that businesses have access to the talent that they need. We do this primarily in our target sectors, which are advanced manufacturing, healthcare, and construction. So construction is what I want to talk about related to this goal area. So through the help of all of those partners and stakeholders that I just mentioned, we have a workforce plan that we have developed. And these are the goals that hopefully you see on your screen in front of you. And I just want to talk through some of the ways that as a workforce board and a community, we're working towards meeting those goals. Because I think there's probably some opportunities here for us to be better aligned and better coordinated with the city since we have this shared goal. So first goal, to connect you to jobs, training, and apprenticeship opportunities. One of the things that we're doing is we have a summer works, basically internship program for youth and young adults. So we're working with young people ages sixteen to twenty-four over the summer months to get them into paid work experience. And we're also doing some work readiness and career exposure, things like that. This past summer, we had a partnership with Constructing Hope, who runs a fabulous and really well-respected pre-apprenticeship program. So we did a summer boot camp for a group of youth. And I'm going to talk a lot more about pre-apprenticeship programs as I, as I get into some of these next goals. But I think this is one of the ways that we truly need to make sure that we are maintaining focus and maintaining investment in getting young people and all people really connected to registered pre-apprenticeship programs. We also, we're not funded to serve in-school youth who are currently in high school. And at the same time, we also realize that high school students are our future workforce. And so specifically in the construction industry, we want to do everything that we can to support the building trades and construction C T E programs. And one of the things that we know about them, particularly in this region, is that there are two main events that our industry partners really support each year. One of those is Dozer Day, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. You may not know that the Friday before Dozer Day, a few years back, they started a career fair. And so this is where high school students come from all over the region. It just happened a few weeks ago. We had over twelve hundred high school students. And they come for a career fair and have the opportunity to engage directly with contractors. So that's one big event that our community is really rallying around. And then the other one is the grade thirteen career fair. And if you haven't heard about that one, that one's been put on by our private industry partners. And it really is the culminating event for high school seniors who are participating in building trades C T E programs, where they get to come to a big hiring event right before they graduate. So that's another one I think we really need to be supporting. Our second goal, to advance equity and diversity in the construction industry. This again is where we really need to be investing in and supporting our pre-apprenticeship programs. Pre-apprenticeship programs in the building trades are one of the only proven effective strategies at truly being able to engage women and people of color in construction jobs and help with retention, which I'm going to talk more about. We did a workforce market study for the I B R back in the spring of twenty twenty four. And one of our recommendations to them was to develop more robust equity policies and practices to support the recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce. We, we analyzed over a hundred public, public infrastructure projects coming online in the next few years. And what we found is that very few had stated workforce goals in those projects. So those are some of the recommendations that we're making to I B R that could be very applicable to a public owner like the city as well. And I think there's also a perception that workforce goals are really hard to meet because we lack the supply of diverse workers. And that's what will bring me to our next goal area, which is to improve the retention of existing apprentices and workers. We have to address job site culture and some of the other challenges on, on these big construction jobs. We know that workers are a lot more likely to stay in an industry that has a reputation for positive job site culture and good work-life balance. So there's some work that needs to be done there regarding retention. Same workforce study that we did for I B R, we partnered, one of our research partners was Dr. Maura Kelly from, from O S U, or excuse me, from P S U. She has done extensive research on the inequalities in the construction trades. And still, even through our study just last year, she found that, you know, people are still experiencing, experiencing a great deal of harassment and unfair treatment on construction job sites. And women and people of color are subject to it more than everyone, and everyone is subject to it. One of the top reasons that apprentice decided for leading their program early was things like problematic job site culture. So some of the things I think we really need to work towards as a community is establishing zero tolerance policies, more robust reporting mechanisms, and then consistent implementation of job site culture programs, some of the programs that we know to work, like Green Dot and Rise Up. And those are things that we'd really like to see applied across all, you know, major public projects. And then the last thing, connecting career changers to jobs and training, jobs, training, and career opportunities. A couple of years ago, we developed a skilled trades workshop that we deliver month to month through our providers at our workforce centers. And we develop these workshops in partnerships with our building trades apprenticeship programs. And it's done virtually, it's really designed to give very light career exposure for people in the building trades. And mostly to kind of give them the secret sauce on applying for and interviewing with registered apprenticeship because it is a bit different than applying for any other job. There's a lot of weight that goes into that interview. And we want to make sure that people are ready and prepared for it. So that's on the construction front. I think there's a lot of work there that the city can plug into with us. And then the last thing that I wanted to say around action C, to develop an investment toolbox to support the recruitment and expansion of businesses offering access to quality jobs. Just a couple of things here. The first thing I did, and these may be data points that y'all already know. And I apologize if this is, these are things you already know. But I looked at just the city of Vancouver's largest occupations. I won't read them to you. You see their average earnings in parentheses there. And then I also looked at the city of Vancouver's top earning occupations. I listed those average earnings in the parentheses there. So all of that to say that I do think it's important that we work together to develop and support strategies that can encourage more growth in some of these industries that offer access to these higher paying jobs. And last thing on that, we have a longstanding partnership with C R E D C. I know GALLD U as well. You know, they are actively recruiting traded sector companies, which do tend to offer good wages, good benefits, stable scheduling, things like that. That's one thing that we're doing. And then the last thing is when we were developing our own quality jobs strategy and framework, we looked at a project that the Port of Portland did. It was the Gresham Vista Business Park. So it was an industrial land, which is different than what, what we have here necessarily in the city of Vancouver. But I still think there could be things we might learn from that project. They basically said, we want to, we want to only have quality jobs employers on this industrial land site. So they set criteria for the types of companies that they were willing to accept. And it was all things around, you know, wages, career growth opportunities, equity and inclusion, those types of things. So I think those could be interesting strategies also to look at for city economic development. End of that.
Thank you. All right, and so action D has to do with incentivizing employers to invest in childcare options. So we're not in the childcare business, either are you. We know that. But one thing we share in common is that we're committed to expanding access to affordable childcare. And back in twenty twenty, W S W did, conducted a study that we called the Business Case for Childcare, where we surveyed thirty-two companies, which represented more than forty-four hundred workers. And nearly twenty percent reported childcare issues within the past twenty-four months, specifically that it had hindered them getting to work. And so we know that it's only grown since twenty twenty, of course. That's why W S W is focused on three main areas to address this. One is co-designing options with workers and advocates. Things like onsite childcare, offsite childcare, subsidies, sponsorships, and more. The trades are a good example of where these conversations are happening. Number two is partnering with state and local governments and childcare experts to expand supply and secure funding. An example of this is Oregon's Employee Related Daycare Fund, which provides direct subsidies to apprentices on highway projects. And this, of course, is already happening, and many are taking advantage of it. So that's an example of partnership. And three is encouraging employers to offer scheduling flexibility and, and work options, just to make work easier for employees, specifically those with children. But also it would help them to retain their, their talent. So childcare, of course, is not just a family issue. It's, it's an issue that is good for all of us. And it is workforce infrastructure. We consider it part of our required infrastructure, just like roads, just like broadband, just like anything. We have to have childcare. And expanding access to it strengthens families, of course. It supports businesses, which we all want to do. And ultimately, it drives economic growth. So why does workforce development matter? First, I want to start by talking about how this looks in the community. So we know that when people go to work or back to work, we reduce unemployment, we lessen reliance on public assistance, and we strengthen our competitiveness here in Vancouver by building a strong labor force. We're also supporting local businesses with job-ready talent, which means stronger businesses and higher productivity and increased tax revenue, which, of course, are the building blocks for economic growth. And when community members have in-demand careers earning self-sufficiency wages, we reduce reliance on and pressure on public services. And we create lasting financial stability that positively impacts today, but also down the road. So it's an investment into our future here. So as an example, a quick example of how we do this work, we have a program called Economic Security for All, where it's a poverty reduction program. It's statewide. We have implemented it here in southwest Washington. Statewide, participants come in earning under ten thousand a year. You can believe that. But after time in the program, they exit the program earning nearly fifty thousand. So here in southwest Washington, we have great numbers. Every one dollar invested returns four dollars and twenty-five cents to back to the community. And how do we know that? Through reduced public assistance. These are people who are getting up of public assistance. They're going to work. They're, they're able to spend money in the communities. They're able to contribute. So those are just some examples. So workforce development is, of course, a huge driver in economic development. It keeps businesses competitive, dollars flowing through our communities, our community, and stabilizes families. So our approach to this, three quick things. We combine our funding as often as we can. We have several buckets of funding to provide for these programs or to support these programs. We take those dollars, we combine them, and we really try to... We take those dollars, we combine them, and we really try to strategize and make them go as far as possible. We design programs guided by employer demand, of course, to ensure that training matches business needs. No sense in sending somebody to training and paying for that if there's not a job at the end. So we know that. And then we track results to improve outcomes and deliver strong returns on our investment. Really, it worked to us that we're tracking our outcomes, we're making adjustments as we need to to ensure that we're effective and efficient in what we're doing. All right. So let's build Vancouver's workforce infrastructure together. So how can the city be involved? Up路ways. Investment, first, financial investment, but it could also mean in-time investment. Your support helps to expand training opportunities, job fairs, and educational events that are needed for this work. Those things support residents and make support businesses, of course. Collaboration by participating on advisory boards, strategy sessions, regional partnerships, roundtables. There's so many things that we could partner on. And then supporting through your communications channels. You have excellent communications channels. So, you know, we would love to have opportunity to leverage your communication channels for the work that we're doing. If nothing else, Darcy and I both want to wrap this up by saying that we really value our partnership with the city tremendously. And if you've gathered nothing from this, but this one thing, and that is that we want to make sure that our partnership, well, we want to thank you for the partnership, but we want to make sure that the partnership continues to grow. We want you to be able to call on us if you have a need, and we want to be able to call on you should we be, say, applying for a regional grant or whatever the case might be. We just want to make sure that we're in close partnership. Then we'll put out the questions. Councilors, do you have questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Fantastic work, Darcy and Ryan. Especially, you know, taking a look at his incentivizing employers to invest in childcare options, particularly for lower-income workers, crucial at this point. So thank you so much for all the data.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor?
Yeah, and of course, this partnership has been strong and look forward to how it can grow. It's great that, you know, Chris Hardes and his team have put together this strategy for us and look forward to how we can continue to integrate that into the future. And especially, I'm also just so excited about the work you do with our youth in helping them find a footing and path forward, especially those that have struggled through traditional pathways, so really be able to find that way to envision the future for themselves. Thank you very much.
Counselor Chris?
Thank you. I look forward to learning more about what type of collaboration is possible. Particularly, also looking a little bit more to your programming as we think about maybe we can leverage each other in some of those programs. And I know that we're submitting an impact lab through the National League of Cities for some early childhood exercise that we'll be doing with some partners here. We're looking into some possible things and maybe we should follow up on that with you as well. And I'm so happy to see your four goals there on slide, I forget the slide number, but you listed out the four goals on establishing pathways and connecting you, advancing equity, diversity, improving retention, and kind of career changers. So glad to see that those have stayed steady and will continue to do so and have a pure way from that. But definitely want to sit down and talk about what other collaborations are possible.
We would love to. I think there's all kinds of opportunities. We're like barely scratching the surface today. Thank you. So Mary Och?
Thank you. Can I say one last thing that I should have said? We really appreciate you having this strategy written down on paper and including us in the process. You don't know how helpful that is to us, to guiding our work, to make sure that we are supporting each other's goals. Not all cities and counties have strategies like this that are well documented, and it does make it really challenging for us to know exactly how we can support. So just thank you for doing that.
And Counselors, if any of you are going to AWC, we can share that with documents. So, Mary, are there any other comments, questions?
No. No, thank you.
That concludes the business of the city. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to come and talk to us regarding issues of the city and such. And we have cards of individuals who signed up to come and talk to us. This is also the place where we do the audio recording, but not the televised portion of it. So I'll ask CBTV to stop the video feed. And in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, we will not be taking any votes or engaging in any final action of any matter from here on out. So with that, Counselors, let's go ahead and listen to our community members and CBTV. You can cut the video feed, and we'll move into our floor. Now, Ms. Dolling, we have Evan Gross. Was he coming in person or in? Okay, Mr. Gross, please. And Doll online? Deborah Tanner, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. But I will have to say this. I have been to many surrounding cities to Vancouver and been to their city council meetings, and what I experienced there is something much different. When I've gone to the other meetings, it's welcoming. They offer you to speak. They want to hear what we have to say. They want to hear the praises of the people of their community. They want to hear the concerns. And they also welcome guests from other cities. And if somebody shows up late because of traffic or work-related, you know, not getting off work on time, they're asked and welcomed to speak at the very end by their mayors. That doesn't happen here. Here, only one time a month, we can speak publicly. It should be four times a month, and that's where it is at with the other communities. You shut off for the public, so right now, we're just speaking to somebody who's ever in the room and the four walls. That's not really fair. Where do you find the audio of it if it is on audio for the public to view and listen to? Not view, but listen to. I'd like to know where that is. I'm just wondering why. Why is there such a difference in the cities? And why does that take place? When I first spoke, it was in regards to a case that I was involved in where I was ripped off, and I wanted to talk and warn my community because businesses were ripped off. And I was welcomed at all the other communities and also talked to other, there were police. And here, that didn't happen. It was shut off and nobody heard. And I had other victims that were looking out my grave way to come forward and speak. So it just concerns me. I just wonder what you're afraid of, that you don't want to hear the praises or you don't want to hear from your community. The second thing I'd like to speak on this evening is about parking in the city of Vancouver and our city and our neighborhoods right around here where I live. I walk daily, and I've been seeing city workers out tagging, warning, and ticketing vehicles, putting their long yellow warning slips in zip locks and on people's cars. This is targeting and coming after homeowners, tenants, and taxpayers in regards to expired tags, issues with plates possibly, or parking for over 24 hours. Some people have more than one vehicle. Some people work from home, and those cars are parked there for a reason. But my concern is you tell VP to stand down, and they're not allowed to ticket for tags that are expired, plates that are on vehicles, those people without licenses and things like that. Most of the violations that you're going around are neighborhoods and ticketing people for. But you allow the homeless to park everywhere, have their trash overcoming out of their cars, on top of their cars, going through their, and you don't ticket them, and they have expired tags and all kinds of things. It's just a question I have. And it just, it concerns me, and it concerns me to my neighbors that I live by. Thank you.
Bruce Barnes? Busy, 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 no mayor?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bruce Barnes. On the record, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I had a few things this evening. Started with CTRN, IBR, TriMet, and the RTC. I think that everybody that's on these boards should probably resign for their jobs because of the debacle. I had a very candid conversation with my dad, probably yelling at him because he can't hear, but also writing lots of notes back and forth. We decided that he's going to fund the new interstate bridge project. He's going to get volunteers to fund this thing, and we're going to call it the Bridge of Bureaucracy, because this has turned into an absolute joke, in my opinion. The overstatement of ridership, the waste of millions of tax dollars, a person that was in charge of the program that has now resigned for the IBR project. And it's very ironic to me and concerning that he resigned after I went to the CTRN meeting and the TriMet meeting and asked where all this money is going to. And if there's been, money is paid upstream to businesses already in advance. If this bridge isn't going to get built, do those funds come back to the taxpayer, or do they just win the lottery? Those are questions I do have. Secondly, I've got some ideas about the remodel of the city council chambers. I've seen things that people have shown me on the internet. I don't have social media, but there's some concerns that there's been some threats to the city council and mayor. I'd like to know if that's true, because you want to bulletproof the building. And I'm very concerned with an $800,000 remodel when we've just given a multimillion-dollar piece of property that we could have sold right behind this building away for $1, and I didn't see a posting for that so anybody else could bid on that. I understand it's for, you know, affordable housing, but it's very concerning to me that we're giving away taxpayers' property. The third thing I want to talk about, and probably the most important, is we've got to be on an even playing field if we're going to respect each other in this room, right? Ty, last week, you spoke on going to the No Kings Rally. I respect your ability to go to that. But you're also supposed to be an impartisan leader in the community. Mayor Anne, you did the same thing. So these are my concerns when you stated to others that you're being suspended for politics in this meeting room, but yet we're talking about politics in this meeting room. Kim Harlos, you also spoke for 15 minutes and also talked about politics and losing funding to your campaign when you were talking about your business with having somebody file up some kind of a charge against you for either wrongdoing or not wrongdoing. So if we're going to respect each other, there's got to be a fair playing field, and that's all I got for this evening. Thank you very much.
Brad Erhvar?
Hello, Council. Many is great. Your work. I'm going to feel a little awkward if you also just stare at the faces tonight, unfortunately. I don't know how these committee forums generally work, but I generally like to hear responses when I speak. But if I don't get one, that's okay. It's just, to me, a form of means communication, unfortunately. I came here on October 13th and briefly spoke in regards to a letter I had provided. It was simply email to the email listed on that I filed my initial ethics complaint. And I really liked acknowledging, just acknowledging that you received that. I only received one response, and that was from the city attorney. But to me, it's important to ensure that the city council received that letter. I know under the Open Public Meetings Act that if a meeting is continued where there is a violation, there's no, I would say, council members at the time, that they can be held personally liable. And if you had the opportunity to read that, I believe that you would be able to determine the violations that occurred in regards to the procedure. I had mentioned the Appearance of Fairness doctrine at that meeting as well in regards to the October 6th meeting. I was told by the city attorney that that particular reading was, that she had stated that it wasn't quasi-judicial in nature at the meeting. When I review the transcripts, I see no mention of that. In fact, what I see mention of is multiple times the council, when you made a decision and I think told that you had complete discretion to dismiss the complaint and to send it to a hearings examiner to take whatever action was available under Section 9 of Policy 100-36. To me, that is very obvious with that discretion that it was a quasi-judicial proceeding that happened. Therefore, the requirements of the Appearance of Fairness do apply in regards to that. That includes equal speaking time. That would include recitations of, you know, what the council's obligations are in those types of proceedings. And none of that happened. And I feel like I've tried my best to let city council know and have that conversation, but all I've received is that letter from the city attorney. And at this point, it feels like really I've just exhausted any nonjudicial remedies that I would have.
Counselor, if there are any comments you'd like to make, see?
I guess I was, yeah, I followed the saying, one, it's a policy of the council. And it is not a state law. It's a policy of council. Two, I'm confused why at that point you think it's quasi-judicial or why it's, we were determining next course of action. So we gave you what you wanted, which is to send it on to a hearings examiner. So there's definitely confusion as to why you're still upset if we did what you wanted to.
May I respond? Would you like to step back up there?
Otherwise, it won't be on the record.
Okay. So first, you had mentioned, why would I be upset if you have done what I wanted you to do? I think that, to me, this was never about wanting a specific action per se. It was about wanting the process and procedure of city charter, of city policy to be followed. And to me, that's the most important thing. And if that process is violated, then what I wanted to have would never happen. In regards to why I think it would still be considered quasi-traditional in nature, I encourage you to review the statements that were made by the city attorney before the meeting and by Harlos herself in regards to what actions the city council were told that they were authorized to take that night. I think it's very clear that whether it was intentional in regards to what the policy actually states can happen, but what was told to city council, and there was no disagreement that you guys only have one option that night. It was, you were told that you could take several options. It was discretionary. And that discretion in regards to the complaint, being able to be dismissed that night according to the statements, being able to apply sanctions to Harlos that night according to the statements, those are quasi-judicial actions. Those are not just legislative actions. And so that's why I believe that, and I believe that's why things like expedite communications would apply that night. There were statements made to the Colombian. There were statements made to the Columbian in regards to the matter by Ms. Harlos. She obviously had been informed by somebody to prepare testimony that night and that she would be allowed to speak. There was nowhere in the agenda that she was told that she would be given fifteen minutes to speak that night in regards to that. And so those are things that would also be applicable, I believe, as well.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney Attorney? I've only been on council for ten years. And quasi-judicial has only ever come up in land use, where we are, where by state law, we are following a process through his view what a hearings examiner has reported. And we are to sit in judgment on whether or not the hearings examiner acted appropriately in their determination. I am struggling to understand how this would be a quasi-judicial experience. Can you help me understand what does take us to a point that becomes a quasi-judicial?
Thank you, Councilmember Stover. As I expressed to Mr. Harlow, that proceeding was not, it is not, a quasi-judicial proceeding that had all the protections in it that he mentioned. For example, equal time to the applicant and those who might be against applicants. The difference there is, as you said, in a quasi-judicial hearing, this council is not sitting as a legislative policymaking body. It's sitting as if it were a court, a judicial body. And as such, the protections for the parties that appear before it as council is making its decision. That quasi-judicial process is different than, again, as you said, Councilmember Stover, the council following its own city council policy, which in this case is one hundred dash thirty-six, that sets out the clear steps that happen once a complaint is lodged against, in this case, a city council member. We have taken those steps. We're in the process of taking those steps. As part of that policy, it does give council an opportunity to make determinations along the way. Ms. Derry-Hart has called that discretion, and I think that's a fair word to describe it. The fact that a city council policy gives council discretion as it works itself through a city council policy does not automatically turn it into a quasi-judicial process. So the fact that council had options before it, chose one, even though it could be somewhat similar to a quasi-judicial process, it does not, did not turn this process into a quasi-judicial one.
Thank you. And I feel confident that your interpretation is correct. For you, you asked for acknowledgement. Was the letter received? Yes. The letter received long after the Columbian received it. Actually, I read about it in the Columbian, I read about it in many different places. So yes, I've received the letter.
I'm referring to the letter acknowledging violations that was never sent to the Columbian. Or it wasn't, it wasn't published in the Columbian?
Well, I've, I read, I saw, okay, maybe it was in the Columbian, but it was online. It got to me much sooner than the letter actually got to, got to me personally. Thank you.
Councillors, any other comments or questions? I'd like to speak. Is this a regular city council meeting? Is this a regular city council meeting? If it is, why is the CBTV on? Is it a regular meeting? And I have a right to speak if it's not? It is seven thirty-nine. By the law, I have a right to speak? Thank you for being on record. You'll answer to it and be held accountable.